Kids in the United States do not see. And it give them the opportunity to have a positive experience with a Los Angeles police officer is just a wonderful thing. The kids love it, the police officers love it.
I feel excited because we're gonna get free stuff.
The kids each get a brand-new school backpack and $100 gift card. So what does $100 buy?
I got paper clips. I got colored pencils, 36-pack, a whiteout.
Well, I asked Josh what he would want if he could choose anything in the store, and he chose to get some whiteouts.
Whiteout? Okay, good. Yeah, you don't make mistakes.
But some kids know what they really want: gummy worms.
You gotta have candy, right?
Money for the school supplies comes from a private donor, but the officers pay out of their own pockets if the kids go over budget. And with that, the kids are prepped and ready for a brand-new school year. The officers hope to do it all again next school semester. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A total of 25 kids got to shop with a cop. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. We leave you now with some photos of the Watts riots taken by LAFD photographers. Most of them have never been seen publicly. The negatives were discovered in the City Records Center last year and are now preserved in the city archives. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
A single ember that escapes from a wildfire can travel more than a mile. You can't control where that ember will land, only what happens when it does. Get Fire Adapted now at fireadapted.org.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, sergeants. Please call the members.
Members, if you're in your office, please report.
Mr. Spindler, please take a seat. Take a seat. Please, everyone, take your seats. In fact, Mr. Rue, Mr. Rue, it's my understanding that you have an introduction.
I wanted to introduce some special guests that we have today at council. The team from Nagoya to stand. In 1959, Los Angeles, Nagoya, City of L.A., was part of President Eisenhower's Citizen International Exchange Program. The city has a bond with the city of La Cia, Los Angeles. Our district city relationship will extend to connect us through communication, its companies, schools, and individuals. Today, the Gump Day basketball conference will be held in Los Angeles. I want to love the people who belong here, and encourage you to explore our city and immerse yourself in the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bonin has arrived. Is that Mr. Bonin in the back?
Yes.
Yes, it is. So we are now at 10 members. So why don't we begin? Madam Clerk?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Krikoria, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Weston, 10 members present in court. Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Okay, Mr. Price moves. Ofero seconds, next.
Enter resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves. Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Do we have a technical glitch? I didn't hear. Madam Clerk?
Would you like to run through the agenda, Mr. President?
Okay, let's quickly run through the agenda.
Items 1 through 3 are items known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1A, D, F, G, and H may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid. Also, the department requests to continue items 1C and E to September 4th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order? Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on all 3 items.
All right, so let's hold those. Let's now move to the next section of items 4 through 7.
Items 4 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, specials? Any specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, no applause? Let's move forward. Items 8 through 11?
Items 8 through 11 are items which public hearings have not been held. Temples require for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards on those items?
Yes, cards on all items.
Okay, let's hold those items, and that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Buscaino to come in and pinch-hit for the president, because we have a very special presentation.
Okay, Mr. President. Wow, what exciting... A lot of excitement here at the John Ferraro's chambers. Floor's yours, Mr. President.
Yes, right behind me, or right beside me. If I could ask Mr. Price and Mr. Harris Dawson to join me? Mr. President and members, there are presentations, and there are presentations. And prior to us beginning this presentation, I want to make a request to the stand-in president, Mr. Joe Buscaino, please do not break into song. I do not want you to break into... I know it's hard.
I'm tempted.
I know you're tempted. But over the past several months, we have been celebrating anniversaries. Anniversaries just last week with the Watts revote riots, 50 years, to the Voting Rights Act, 50 years. So today, we celebrate the 50th anniversary of one of the coolest, and obviously, and we may be a little prejudiced, the best radio station in the country that happens to live and exist in our own backyard. Let's give a round of applause for KJLH. And briefly... I'm getting a Cleveland Brown flashback. Flashback. I thought I was back in the dog pound and at the stadium in Cleveland where I'm born and raised. I like those roof-roofs. But in 1965, a man by the name of John Lamar Hill felt that it was important that there was a voice, a radio station that reached out to a community that had little resources at that point in time. So this man bought a radio station out of Long Beach. It was called K-Fox. It was a country-western radio station, and we love country-western, but we needed something with a little more soul on this part of town. So we... He acquired this station, and he changed the call letters from K-Fox to KJLH.
His initials.
The reason why, I don't know why, but for whatever reason, it was difficult for people to get used to saying that, Mr. Price. So they had to come up with a way to do that, and they did that with kindness, joy, love, and happiness. Then the community got it, the cute community embraced it, and like Mr. Price said, they were the initials of the owner. He owned the station for about 14 years. He said 12 of which he never made it into the black. But it started to get good, it started to make money, and he had to make a choice. Did he want to expand his work in radio, or did he want to focus on his other businesses? So he decided to focus on his other businesses. But it was important to him and important to the community as to who the new owner would be of this station. Because like I said, now it was popular, now it was making money, and there were people interested in acquiring this station. We were blessed that there was a man who was not only one of the most talented entertainers, musicians, songwriters, world... Known all over the world, that had an interest in acquiring this station, but he was a man with a track record, being out front, on the front lines for human rights and for world peace and civil rights. He was an activist. He was an activist, and we were a community in need of an activist of his stature. So in 1979, this great radio station, which had endless potential, was sold to no other than Stevie Wonder. Let's give Stevie Wonder a round of applause. So soon as Mr. Wonder acquired the station, not only did they continue to play some of the greatest music of the time, they... You could see them get more connected with the community. You could see them take on hard issues, very uncomfortable debates they had on the radio, controversial figures, political figures, just individuals that would create a dialogue that would help move this city and this country forward. So we wound up with an all-purpose radio station. And I just want to highlight this radio station that at one point in time, Mr. Price was in the district that Mr. Harris Dawson and I represent at this time. Mr. Harris Dawson, I'm giving you a little credit, because I think it was in my district, but I want to show you that I respect you. But it was for a long time, it happened to be in the district that I represented. But you have to look at this station where they had live broadcasts from the United Nations, live broadcasts from the World's Fair in Canada. They had a delegation go to Russia, and I... At every Democratic convention, they have a group of folk that are out there covering the convention so that the community in LA, for those of us, for the most part, south of the 10 freeway, could stay informed. They have had presidents interviewed on their station. They... There was an interview with Barack Obama, Hillary Clinton, and Michelle Obama. So this station is more than just important for us. We all grew up together, and it's an honor for this council to declare that this day belongs to KJLH. Today is your day, Mr. Wonder, and all the fine people that you have, that have assisted you in making today so special. But with that said, before Mr. Price chokes me and throws me to the back of the line, I think I want to bring up Mr. Curran Price to say a few words. Ladies and gentlemen, our colleague, Curran Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just so happy and so honored to join with you as we...
I'm just so happy and so honored to join with you as we celebrate KJLH Day here in Los Angeles, for all the right reasons. KJLH has certainly been an icon in our community, and certainly since 1994, when, when they moved to Inglewood, they became the Town Hall, really, not just for Inglewood, really for Southern California. I had a special treat, because I had a, I had a business that was two doors down, so I became really familiar with the KJLH family. And as an elected official, I've had the opportunity to come on the air many times, as, as the council president referenced, opportunities to communicate with the community on a variety of issues and concerns, and, and the station has just always been there for the community. And so I'm just honored to join with you as we celebrate Stevie Wonder, his purchase, his intentional desire to have an institution that's going to reflect the community, report on the community, and be a part of the community. And all the on-air and off-air personalities certainly reflect that. They, they reflect that consciousness, they reflect that desire to be involved in the community, and they all have been a real blessing to us. And so I'm, I'm proud, pleased to join with the celebration, and to coin a phrase, I just want to say, thanks for letting a community roll.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Price. And, and for those of you that wake up extremely early, for those of you that can't sleep, all you have to do is turn on the station about four o'clock in the morning, and I believe that's Dominic De Prima and Front Page, and all of those conversations have a governmental, political spin to it. And I've had the pleasure, as I'm sure, Mr. Price, to be on that show, and members, you will be amazed at how many people are up at 4:30 in the morning. With that said, an early riser, new member to this council, Mark Queens Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members. I'm having a little bit of a geek-out moment here. We're standing next to, in our chambers, the most prolific songwriter in the United States alive today. It, it's a big deal. I want to join in the celebration of KJLH. Members, KJLH is very much a part of the city, the tapestry and the history of the city. When historians go back and they try to figure out what was happening in Los Angeles in the 20th and 21st century, part of what they're going to need to do is listen to the KJLH archives. Because every big issue that this city has faced, KJLH has been right there with their microphone open to hear the voices of decision-makers, to hear the voices of residents and business and everyone alike. I tell every company or business that says they can't find the African-American community or they can't find people, African-American people to apply for jobs or contracts, you need to go on KJLH. Get there at four in the morning for Dominic De Prima's show. Say your piece, and, and people will show up. So we're very, very happy to join in this celebration, especially at a time when a lot of people are leaving the radio business and going on to other businesses. KJLH, led by Mr. Stevie Wonder, has doubled down and continued their investment in, in our community, and so we're very proud today to celebrate radio-free KJLH.
So members, I ask you to join us today in declaring this day, KJLH Day, in the greatest city on the planet. Let's give it up for KJLH. I'm going to present this to, we're going to present this to Mr. Wonder and his crew, and let the pictures begin. Mr. Curran, Mr. Price, will this turn it down?
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm going to call you up to speak. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great pleasure and an honor to present to each and every one of you, one of the, if not the, greatest entertainers, musicians, songwriters of all time, Stevie Wonder.
Mr. President, Mr. Price, all of you here today, ladies and gentlemen, members here of the council, you know, the City Hall looks kind of good. I would like to first of all, say as I always say, and give all praise and thanks to God for, for the opportunity of being a part of the, the history, the legacy of KJLH. We have, and I purposely have kept the name KJLH for the, what, 37 years we've had it after John Lamar Hill? Because obviously, he was the first African-American owner of a radio station, FM radio station west of the Mississippi. And that within itself is an incredible feat for many reasons. I made a commitment to him, first of all, from knowing the history of a station that I knew as a little boy in Detroit, Michigan, that was operating from Ings to Michigan in Detroit, WCHB and a WCHD, one of the first African-American-owned stations, that I would do my best to keep the legacy of our culture and to, even before it became a word or a sentence said, make it clear that being that we are the first people of this planet, born the first civilization, that obviously, it is only proper and true to know that black lives do matter. In saying that, I'm also saying that, from the fact that we are the beginning of civilization, that from all of that, all of the other cultures and people of various ethnicity came, and so you too all have a little black in you. So we need to keep that very real and understand that, yes, black lives matter, all lives matter, and it's important as to how we value each other. We cannot say that we care and not do the things to show that we care. So my commitment has been, as has been all that have been there, to do our very best to bring the message of unity, kindness, joy, love, and happiness, as well as radio freedom to this city and now through the internet all over the world. I thank everyone who is here and those that are not here, people of KJLH, the general manager, Ms. Karen Slade, program director, Mr. Andre Russell, and I'll be naming for the next 15 minutes, but everyone who is here representing KJLH and those who are not here, the various air personalities, everyone that works in management, all the various people in the various departments. I truly thank you tremendously, because none of this could have happened and continued to happen without you. I thank all of the former members that have been a part of KJLH as well, as we celebrate 50 years strong and still strong. We have a, we have a few things that I'd like to share with you that, as a songwriter, as an artist, and as a person who understands the commitment has to be made to not only make the world accessible via radio, but as well make the world accessible to those with disabilities. So, so it is important that technologically we continue to make every single way possible for those who are with any disability be able to take advantage of this technology. Another thing that has been very pressing on my heart is our issue, and clearly, I want to, I want to say this without apology, because I don't say "listen to" or "heard." You know, we as blind people, we say "watched." So last night, I went to see Straight Outta Compton. Now, I say that because obviously, we still are having the same kinds of things happening If we matter to each other, we've got to show that we matter by how we treat each other. That's what we have to do. Equally as important as that is, for those who have the commitment and responsibility and job of protecting and serving us as citizens, you have to do that without prejudice, without anger, with a spirit of calmness, because you have the power in your hands of life and death. So, in that being said, I'm hoping that those who protect and serve and those we as citizens will develop a better relationship, for real, and stop playing around. Last but not least, I've had this in my heart for a long time, and so I keep hearing people say how bad people want to have guns, it's impossible for us to get rid of guns, it's impossible to solve the problem. So I'm challenging someone, an inventor or designer or whomever it might be, to come forward at whatever point and get with me. I have an idea as how we can solve this problem of guns, because I think that every single person that has a gun, first of all, everyone that has a gun should not have one. That's number one. As well, I feel that every single person that does have a gun that's registered must, if you believe in your gun so strongly, claim the bullet. Be responsible by putting yourself, your name on that gun, that every time it's shot, it knows who's shooting the gun. And we can do that, and we can solve this problem of gun violence. I'm believing that. So let's make it happen. Because the more people that live and are not killed can hear my music. No, I'm being, I mean, I'm, seriously, I just think that we have to do something about this problem, and we can. I thank you for celebrating KJLH. We're going to enjoy this day, and I will never forget it. I'll try to come up with a song about it. But you guys will not get the royalties. I thank you so much, and God bless you. Karen, would you like to say something?
Let's give it up for KJLH and Mr. Stevie Wonder.
General Manager Karen wants to say something.
Well, we will let the boss speak.
I'm happy for this moment and this opportunity to say thank you, Los Angeles, for your warm reception of KJLH over the years, for all the kindness and joy that you showed us and the happiness that's bestowed on us. We do appreciate it, and we love this city and all businesses that want to advertise with KJLH. We welcome you too. Thank you very much.
And Mr. President, Mr. Buscagino, when Mr. Wonder does the song where, where it reflects on this day, maybe you could be a backup?
Count me in, count me in.
And then we, then we could ask the mayor to maybe play the piano or something.
A dynamic trio, Mr. President.
Let's give it up for one of the greatest entertainers of all time.
Thank you. Congratulations to the entire KJLH family and Mr. Wonder. Thank you, Mr. President. Let's give another round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell has a presentation. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Sadio for an announcement?
Announcement?
Very good, Mr. Sadio.
We have some, what an incredible morning. Mr. President, thank you for making this happen, but we also have some incredible guests with us, and I'm proud that they're here with us this morning, from the University of Southern California, with a great tradition of the most incredible running backs in the, in the nation. I'm proud that one of my friends, a young man I grew up with, who grew up in Boral Heights, who played East L.A. Pop Warner, he's an incredible mentor, a great friend, my brother. Please stand for your recognition, Lynn Kane, please stand. Lynn Kane, one of the greatest fullbacks in the history of USC. From another part of the country, another SC, from Southern Carolina, from South Carolina. Members, this is the week that we have the young Democrats of America visiting us, and they have their convention, and we were, Mr. Mr. Kocorian and I were with them just a few nights ago, and he gave a rousing speech, as he's apt to. But we met many of these young people, the young Democrats are here to help shape the future of our city. They, like us, share an inclusive vision, particularly with respect to immigrants, and we're very happy to welcome them. I'd like to introduce the political director of the South Carolina Democratic Party, Jessica Church. Please stand and please welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Next presentation, Mr. O'Farrell, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have with us today our city librarian, John Zabo, and the dedicated, dedicated staff, supporters, and friends of the Los Angeles Public Library. Please give them all a big round of applause. And this just represents a small portion of the many And this just represents a small portion of the many men and women that make the Los Angeles Public Library system one of the best in the United States. In fact, on May 18th of this year, First Lady Michelle Obama presented the Los Angeles Public Library with this year's National Medal on behalf of the Institute of Museum and Library Services, the nation's highest library honor. And this is my favorite gold medal I've ever worn around my neck, this is a little replica of it. The award was accepted by city librarian John Zabo and community member Sergio Sanchez during a White House ceremony. The National Medal for Museum and Library Service is given each year to five libraries and five museums for service to their communities. For 21 years, the award has celebrated institutions that present extraordinary and innovative approaches to public service, making a difference for individuals, families, and communities. The Los Angeles Public Library was selected for its success in meeting the needs of Angelenos and providing a level of social, educational, and cultural services unmatched by any other public institution in the city. The award recognizes the library's programs that help people on their path to citizenship, earn their high school diploma, manage personal finances, and access health and well-being services and resources. Queued up is a clip that shows the video of the ceremony facilitated by First Lady Michelle Obama.
Accepting the award for the Los Angeles Public Library, Los Angeles, California, are city librarian John Zabo and community member Sergio Sanchez. Sergio Sanchez and his wife, Francesca, came to the U.S. from Veracruz, Mexico 25 years ago. They first brought their son to Los Angeles Public Library for storytime as a toddler, and then continued to bring him for many years. Sergio studied English and history and read the news at the library during his free time. Last year, a staff member helped him enroll in a citizenship class at the library, and with the help of library staff and resources, Sergio passed the test and became a U.S. He encouraged Francesca to enroll, and she passed the citizenship test five months later. Sergio is now following in Francesca's footsteps and pursuing his GED with help from the library. Their son is studying to become a chemical engineer at the university and volunteers at a library when he returns home. Sergio says, "When a new family moves into the neighborhood, I tell them the most important place is the library, a place where everyone belongs and is welcome, and where your dream
As we heard in the video, the Los Angeles Public Library is truly accomplishing its mission to serve all communities of Los Angeles. Lives like Sergio and Francesca Sanchez and their son Brian, who are joining us today, have been changed forever by the world-class institution that in the Los Angeles Public Library we certainly have. The Sanchezes were selected to represent the millions of Angelenos whose lives have been improved by the Los Angeles Public Library system. After immigrating from Veracruz, Mexico 24 years ago, the Sanchezes used library resources to improve their English, pursue their GEDs, and become U.S. citizens through the Los Angeles Public Library's Your Path to Citizenship program. And anyone who's listening to this, check it out, it is free. The Los Angeles Public Library serves the largest population of any library in the country through its central library, 72 branch libraries, more than 6 million books and other items, and state-of-the-art technology and its website, lapl.org. These resources and its more than 18,000 public programs provide everyone with free and easy access to information and the opportunity for lifelong learning. This is something extra special, that we in the city have services for all people that are searching and are hungry to better themselves, to broaden their horizons. As Mr. Sanchez said, "The important thing, the most important place in our neighborhoods is the library, a place where everyone belongs and is welcome, and where dreams do come true." I would like to applaud our great city librarian, John Zabo. Under his leadership, the library has become a pioneer in delivering innovative and groundbreaking services to all members of the community. Fresh off of their afterglow of their White House celebration, we have John Zabo and the Sanchez family. Therefore, colleagues, I would like to ask you, in joining me in celebration of this momentous award, and presenting the resolution to city librarian, staff, volunteers, and Colleagues, our superstar city librarian, John Zabo. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Farrell, to the entire city council. An important message today to convey is that this award, this medal, is certainly for the institution that is the Los Angeles Public Library, but it truly belongs to certainly all of you, our city council, our mayor, all Angelenos, our library foundation, our library friends, volunteers, and I think perhaps most especially the very hard-working, dedicated, passionate staff of the Los Angeles Public Library, many of whom, or a number of whom are behind me right now. In selecting someone to go to the White House in Washington, D.C., and represent the Angelenos that we serve through our 73 libraries every day, we could not, as you can see and from hearing the story, from seeing Sergio and his family, we could not have selected a better individual to represent the impact that our libraries have on the people of this great city. Sergio not only was a wonderful ambassador for Angelenos, this city, and the Los Angeles Public Library in Washington, D.C., but since he has returned home, he has been incredibly generous and kind in telling his story and talking about the impact of our libraries, not only on taking the first step on the path to citizenship, but all it has done for his family. And I just want to thank Sergio, Francesca, and Brian Sanchez for doing that. Thank you excellent much. And as the council member nicely said, "This medal is not because we're the biggest library system, it's not because we have so many libraries and serve so many people, it is because of the impact that we have on the people that we serve." And he mentioned the path to citizenship, health programs, and all of the great services that we have. We are not a cookie-cutter library system, we want each of our libraries to meet the needs of each of the communities throughout Los Angeles, and I think that we, all of you, in supporting us and helping us, and all of our great staff do that every single day in L.A. And again, I thank you so much, city council, city councilmember O'Farrell, for this recognition and acknowledgement. We're incredibly proud, and we'll go back and continue serving the people of the city through the Los Angeles Public Library. Thank you so much. And once again, for anyone who is listening to this presentation, go to the L.A. Public nearest library to where you live, check out the resources, check out a book, it will open up a whole world of opportunity and possibility for each and every one of you when you do that. And lastly, stay tuned, because in the next couple of weeks, we're going to announce a very exciting little program that will expand the library's horizons in an all-new way. So be looking for that announcement soon. And with that, we conclude this presentation. Thank you again. Go check out a book.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Here for our Los Angeles Public Library on their National Medal Award. Congratulations. Next, Mr. Sadio for third and final presentation.
Mr. President, I know you are enjoying this morning because you are a great musician and singer in your own right, and this is one of the great things about Los Angeles, is that it brings together the incredible diversity of cultures, and no more do we appreciate it in Southern California than in our music. As you know, last year, we initiated our Summer Latin Jazz and Music Festival, and it was a great success. Over 5,000 people attended over two days in our Highland Park, Sycamore Grove Park, and northeast Los Angeles. This weekend, to the excitement of many, is the second annual Latin Jazz Music Festival, and we've got a great, great lineup. We've got the Heart of L.A. big band, we've got Bravo High School Latin Jazz Band, but we also have Hip Street with a Tower Power cover band with their original singer, we've got Susie Hansen, we've got jazz on the Latin side, we've also gotten Robert Inceley, Cold Duck, we're gonna have the legendary Little Willie G. And then we've got, coming in from New York, he's en route, he should be here shortly, we have Joe Button, a man who's for decades has entertained this nation. But I'm very fortunate to be here with the genius behind this program, the man who I've listened to for decades as well, a young man who has made a career of documenting, recording, memorizing the important notes of each and every performer in this genre. Jose Riso is a giant in our community because he is the person who has the records in his mind. I hope he's got it recorded someplace, of all the musicians, of their histories, their backgrounds, and so I'm very happy to have with us today Jose Riso to talk about our show. And then also, we have one of the performers who will be with us this weekend, Justo Almario and his Afro-Cuban Jazz Ensemble. So, Jose Riso.
Not one to be shy to speak up. Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for, again, allowing us to speak a little bit about Latin jazz. Jazz music in general is a music that is a true American art form, but somehow it always takes a backseat to people really paying close attention to it. It's like, I guess it's like fine art, not everybody can appreciate it, but it is something born out of this country, and we should always keep it close to us. Latin jazz is also an American art form. It was created in the late '40s in New York City and evolved here. Latin jazz started here and eventually went to Latin American countries, of all things. But one of the geniuses of Latin music way back, way back then, Mr. Mario Bauza, he had an apprentice under him by the name of Dizzy Gillespie. And Dizzy, in the late '40s, said, almost like, you know, Uncle Mario, "I'd like to start a big band and want to put some tom-tom drums in the big band," you know, meaning conga drums. So Mario recommended the great Chano Posso, and the rest is history, the beginning of Latin jazz. Older than rock, rock and roll, it's been around a long time, and now still surviving and getting appreciated by many jazz stations across country. Not too many jazz stations left, only five jazz, full-time jazz stations left in the country, so our authentic American art form is getting smaller and smaller as far as a place to be able to share with everyone else. But the Latin Jazz Festival, thanks to Councilman Sadio, will revisit the greatness of Latin jazz as far as the legacy of how we play it here in Los Angeles, and we've got great Latin jazz musicians that will be a part of it. Justo Almario here is one of the great ones. Mario Bauza was one of the first to play straight-ahead jazz and Latin jazz, and when it comes to jazz masters, you know, it's easy for a Latin jazz, for a jazz, for a great jazz master can play, not all great jazz masters can play Latin jazz, but great Latin jazz masters can play both. And Justo Almario is one of those, along with people like Chuchu Valdez and Arturo Sandoval and Paquito de Rivera. So we've got one of the great ones here, played with Freddie Hubbard at 17, 18 years old, was a musical director for Mongo Santa Maria, and we have him here in L.A., and he'll be one of our featured greats, the great Justo Almario.
Good morning. Thank you so very much. As a Latin jazz musician, my heart is swollen with gratitude to have this opportunity to thank you and thank Councilman Sadio for putting this event together where musicians such as myself can participate and be part of the community and be part of something historical that will impact the generations, the young generation, the young kids that are coming, aspiring to be musicians and to our community. So thank you very much, and I hope that some of you may be able to attend our festivities tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, Sunday. God bless you. Thank you.
I'd like to present these resolutions as tokens of our appreciation. As we stated, the concert is this weekend, Friday and Saturday, 12 to 7. Great lineup, and the best price in the city, it's free. So we welcome everybody to join us, Sycamore Grove Park off of Figaroa in northeast Los Angeles.
Mr. Sadio, we appreciate your leadership on this Latin Jazz Festival. We know it's gonna be spectacular as last year. Jose, always good to see you, sir. In addition, in addition to your duties with the Latin Jazz Festival, of course, you've been the musical director for the Central Avenue Jazz Festival for 20 years, and so we just appreciate the continuity, the leadership, and the collaboration that exists, and really demonstrating that music is a bridge. And so we appreciate the leadership, and we look forward to an outstanding lineup. Congratulations.
We're coming right off the heels of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, and we, you and I, are gonna do all that we can in our time here to make sure that we protect this incredible treasure of these two communities, and we'll continue to bridge them together through music, art, and culture.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's give it up again for the Latin Jazz Festival. Okay, Madam Clerk, what is our next item, please?
Item one, call special for cards.
Okay, we've got cards on item one. Let's, Rafiet Salibi, John Walsh, looks like Wayne, and Herman, in that order, please?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. Item one, as usual, protests, appeals. Item one, as usual, protests, appeals, or objections to Building and Safety Department report. Building and Safety usually does a good job of nuisance abatement and issuing these liens, some as high as $4,000, $5,000. But I think what the Building and Safety has got to do is take a look at Wilshire Boulevard, where just a building exploded last night, a huge building exploded because it wasn't inspected. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Liens, cash out of the hands of the middle class and into Herb Wesson's pocket, vote no. We do not have a quorum here at this meeting. Lies. So we start with 1A, CD6. That's...
Nuri Martinez. Oh, Nuri, please, 14602 West Plummer, waive the lien. It's only $773. Do it for the kids, Nuri.
And then C, David Rue. David Rue, are you in the house? CD4, 14905 West Burbank Boulevard. Wave it, wave it, Mr. Newman. Wave it, do it for all the Korean brothers, please. And then we have CD3, that's the Gangsters and Reseda. Vote no. One minute.
Thank you for your comments. Herman?
Now, Nuri, the amount here for the lien is only $773 chump change of money, and you heard the gentleman lawyer that was here talking about the liens yesterday. He says it's unconstitutional. You know, I always ask people, what the fuck does unconstitutional mean? Because most people don't object to it. Because the federal and the state... Hurry up, Sergeant of Arms, get the hell out of the way, because I'm trying to talk. You're disrupting me, you terrorist. Now, going back to the issue here, I'm going to reserve my time because you don't have a quorum, a lot of empty seats, and the bullshitters here pushing the buttons on the people.
He is not speaking about this item.
I'm talking about the liens, Dion. I've got 16 seconds to finish up one minute, goddammit. Give me finish time. Now, this is the point. Stop this illegal due process. I demand that all these liens be put to the side until you have a quorum. Stop pushing the button.
John Walsh. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, you've already spoken. Those are all the cards we have. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11/9. 11/9.
Okay, that matter passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item two, call special for cards.
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Chair, this item is to request a denial of a permit to sell alcohol at the corner of Slauson and Western. It's an area that already has a lot of alcohol outlets, has significant problems with crime and pedestrian injury. We have a letter from our senior lead officer at 77th Division. It is the opinion of this officer, if granted a liquor license, that there would be reasonable likelihood that the offense and offenses associated with alcohol would continue or resume, and/or that the safety of persons and this person's and/or property would be imminently endangered. And so we ask all members to join with us in supporting this denial of a liquor license at Slauson and Western.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dawson. No other, okay, we've got some cards on this matter. Mr. Walsh.
Nothing but praise for Mr. Harris Dawson, nothing but pra, for denying the 7-Eleven license. And a couple of days ago, nothing but praise from Your Honor here that's presiding over the meeting. Now, remember, this stuff only happens, never happens west of La Brea, because where my people, the Jews, are, we make sure that there are very, very few alcohol licenses. However, now, it's time, I think we're seeing a reversal here. I think we're seeing the righteous African-Americans saying, "We have enough liquor licenses. There are plenty of places to buy alcohol in South L.A., and it's time to hit and stop these..." And most of the people who own these places, they're not from America. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Antonio Ramirez?
Thank you very much. This is a step backwards, when you do not allow a business owner to sell what he wants, as long as it's in the United States inventory. This is, again, when you're depriving a business owner and censor him and her what they can or cannot sell. Again, this is a step backward because it is a form of prohibition and censorship. And what you're doing is you're teaching your children how to be puppets, how not to stand up with principle, how not to stand up on integrity, and teach those kids, no to booze, no to drugs. Now, we have to have these children, they can't buy anything because it's no longer being sold. So pretty soon, we're going to be taking things off the markets in every business because it's not appropriate or it's not adequate. I mean, teach the children from infancy, "You do not buy booze, you do not do drugs." Period. Don't overdo it. And if you teach a child to take responsibility for himself, he will walk into any liquor store, whether it be 7-Eleven or anybody, and not buy the peppermint schnapps. Period. Teach a child some self-respect, integrity, and the guts to say, better yet, in Spanish, the balls, to say, "No, I'm not going to buy booze because it's not going to help me. I don't want to buy, I don't want to be a drunken, stupid dingbat and a failure in life." Again, teach the child how to stand up for him or herself and not rely on the business to not be able to sell it. I think, again, that is inappropriate, and it is so un-American. You know, we've come this far to stand up for life, liberty, justice, and all these war battles so we can sell what we want in any liquor store or not. And again, thank you, Mr. Curran. What you're teaching your African-Americans is how to be puppets, like we're teaching our Latinos how to be puppets. Don't worry, there won't be no booze at the 7-Eleven, so just buy candy bars and chocolate milk.
Thank you for your comment. Wayne.
This is two in one week. Good for Marquis Harris Dawson. CD8, listening for once to the community and representing the people. We need to start that. Now, we have 13 more council members to go on the council to step up and do what Curran Price and Marquis Harris Dawson have done, stopping liquor blight, stopping drunkenness, stopping people from urinating in public, because that's all they do, is they over-innundate the community with liquor and cheap liquor, and selling to minors. It goes on all the time. So this community won, and now we have 13 more to go. Each councilman, deny a liquor license in the next 60 days. You've got two that have met the challenge. Get off your asses and make the difference.
Herman, item number two.
Is that you up there, Mr. Speaker, Joe Blow? It's no secret that alcohol consumption, Joe Blow, can cause major health problems, including injuries sustained by many individuals in our community. I'm glad to know that Mr. Price and Mr. Harley Davidson Dawson is standing up for us. Finally, we've got a voice in our community. I don't have to run out the door three minutes just to get to the liquor store for another fucking beer. Isn't that great? But I'm not supposed to drink. That's what Miss, my mommy told me. Mommy's always right, "Son, don't drink till you're 21, you have a job, and you've gone to USC and know what the fuck you're talking about." And that's what happens when you're young. You get influenced by alcohol, drugs, a disease. Research have linked alcohol and consumption to more than 60 other related diseases. Joe, aren't you an ex-police man?
Speak on the item, Herman.
Okay. I want to make sure you're listening, sir, because you've created, you've created a state danger. It's called creating a danger to the people in the state of California for the convenience of alcohol beverages. And although I know CD8 representative is all for it, because he said, "Will not, will not, will not." That's what the paperwork says here, Joe Blow.
Stick to the item.
And I'm going to finish off by saying at 1752 Slauson Avenue, we, the people, all of you who participated here today, know for a fact that we kids win, 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 stopping the bad influence of the drunkenness in Los Angeles caused by the city attorney who gives out permits for convenience and necessity. Mike Fewer, do something about it. Keep up a good track record on these alcohol permits.
Ruth Sarnoff on item two. Ruth, come forward. Welcome. Good morning.
My name is Ruth Sarnoff. I actually am kind of familiar with that particular area of Slauson, and I think that it's very important that the licensing of so many places to sell alcohol in poor communities, particularly in black communities and brown communities, and places where there's not even fresh fruits and vegetables, nor even, in some cases, a market anywhere that's bigger than a small market. I think our priorities for licensing are a bit different, if I may say so. Also, I think that there are opportunities for people in the community, small business people, to, or people that are a franchise owner even, as in this case, to use the opportunity to maybe add something to what they sell as in the community, something that's healthy and productive, like organically grown fruits and vegetables that you put out in front of your market, and you become a place where people can buy something that's decent and good for you. A lot of these places are, alcohol is grandfathered in. The alcohol licensing in downtown L.A. and near Skid Row and in Skid Row is scandalous, and it's grandfathered in, and you need to do something to do something about it. It's really a serious problem, and so I leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, see no speakers on the cue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Next item.
Item number three, call special for cards.
John Walsh, please come forward on item number three. John Walsh passes. Wayne, item number three, followed by Herman. Wayne passes. Herman, item number three. Herman passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, no speakers on the cue. Open the vault roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Next item.
And, Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over for one week for second reading.
Very good. No objection.
Next item is item eight, call special for cards.
Item number eight, John Walsh, come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is what it looks like in innocent street vacation, portions of East Boulevard and South Park Avenue. These, these properties, this property is worth a fortune. The city could sell this. The only reason they vacate property is for a developer to fill out a parcel. No one pays any attention to it. It's Mr. Buscayeno and Mr. Englander. It's Mr. Buscayeno's area, and I'm sure that the developer will be putting money into Mr. Buscayeno's account, his office holder account. But these things happen all over the city. Other cities don't do this. Other cities don't just hand over their city property. They call it vacation, but it's, there's no vacation here. This is the handing over for nothing to a developer property. And believe me, if I get the slightest thing wrong, you jump on me. And when I say things that are absolutely true, you say nothing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Wayne, come forward. Wayne passes. Herman, item number eight.
So, now, we're all back on a motion by Joe Buscayeno and also Mitch Englander, who's running for county supervisor. I suggest vote no, because you shouldn't be giving...
Stick to the item, Herman.
You shouldn't be giving people's property away. The city is giving too much development to developers, and it's just becoming a very disgusting, despicable, me-bullshit thing to do to people in Los Angeles. And I'm just a little boy 13, because the goat man over there made a comment that we should stay on topic. But I am, I'm talking about the vacation, a street vacation.
Can you hold this time, please? Hold this time. Herman, let me remind you to stay on the topic. Go ahead.
So, again, direct the Business Engineering BCE to investigate the report, non-submitted. I hold my time to women, Joe Blow. Thank you.
On this item, Madam Clerk, see no speakers on the cue. Open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Next item.
Item nine, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item number nine, come forward.
Yes, it is Eric Previn. Is that Councilmember Buscayeno today in the big chair?
Item number nine.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Good to see you up there. We do appreciate your taking, taking Mr. Englander's place per our request. Today, item number nine is a legal settlement. This is a case between Scott Garabrant versus the City of Los Angeles. And to be very clear, Mr. Garabrant was a, is frankly, a Parks and Rec employee. And it's my understanding, though, there's very limited information, that there was a FIA claim. Now, FIA, as you all know, is Federal Employment and Housing Act, I believe. And in this particular case, I believe that the guy who was suing was suing because he had been out sick, he had, and then he was reassigned, but it took a very long time for his reassignment to take place. He got, I think the colloquial expression is pissed off, and then he sued the City of Los Angeles. And here we are settling for $250,000, approximately $1,000, which is a lot of money, given our financial needs. Fortunately, they found a way to give him $69,000 out of the salary account for the guy himself, and then the remainder will be issued, interestingly, to the very nice law firm called Law Offices of Stephen Ebner. And this, I don't think, it's written in a way that it looks like it's the Law Offices of Stephen Ebner and Scott Garabrant, but I am fairly sure that Mr. Garabrant is not an attorney. I'm pretty sure Mr. Buscayeno, he may, he may be employed by Parks and Rec in your district. I'm not sure about that. It is a San Pedro-based issue. So this is a return-to-work case, and my concern about this is, ties into my sort of of big-picture concern about the amount of legal fighting that's going on in this chamber and how it's being conducted. As you recall, yesterday, Mr. Bonin made some moving testimony about the settlement of the Cheyenne Desert Train case, and there was no opportunity for the public to weigh in on it like there is on this one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, John Walsh. John Walsh passes Wayne, item number nine.
Yes, we have, we're going to give the poor guy, Scott Garabrant, $69,787. Yay! But we're going to give $176,128 to the Law Offices of Stephen Ebner. We don't need to give the lawyer any money. We need to stimulate the economy. So, give the whole $245,916 to Scott Garabrant. Yay! And then he can decide how much to pay the lawyer. See, that's what you have to do in America. Stop giving the lawyer all the fucking money. Let the man decide how much his lawyer should get. And he's not a partner in a fucking law firm, okay? Get real, y'all. I'm going back to the ghetto.
Okay, last speaker on item number nine. No speakers on the cue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes.
And Mr. President, there's a request for this item to go forth with?
Without objection. Next item, please.
Item 10, call special for cards.
Eric Previn on item number 10, followed by John Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Buscayeno, serving as the temporary acting president. It is Eric Previn once again on item number 10. This is a hashtag Bloomingfield recommendation, and this one has to do with the Westfield Group. Obviously, Westfield LLC, as many of us know, is a big provider of mall services in our communities. They do a fairly good job. We have a very nice mall in my district, I can say. It's not far from where we're doing another development called Sportsman's Landing. The thing about Westfield is, here they're getting 75 thou, which is a, or they're giving 75 thou to us to expedite things, because when things get bogged down at City Hall, you need to expedite them. And the way we expedite things down here is we put the money in the kitty, and that's what's happening here. It's a 75 brand contribution. I will say that it's not the first, because just in the short time, sir, as you recall, when I used to go to the budget meeting before I couldn't bring myself on Mondays any longer, there were several, and this is not the only group that do it. And so the good part about it is, it's a way of contributing to the cost of expediting. But for the folks who can't get expedition effectively provided to them, all the other people, like the guy in my district, Studio City, who tries to get an ice cream shop going and is mired for over a year, it sends a signal that money talks and suckers walk. And now, I'm going to stop at one, I've got 45 left on this one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. John Walsh. John will be followed by Wayne.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. What this is, is a perfectly legal bribe. Westfield Topanga Project wants to open up, expand the mall. They need a striping and signal plan permit. This expedites the city's review. Now, I'm not against these bribes. I just feel this bribe of $75,000 from the multimillion, billion-dollar developer is much too small. We should shake them down for at least $150,000. They're going to be able to open this mall for a couple of earlier months, and that's going to mean millions of dollars. So therefore, I ask you to double the amount to $150,000 for the bribe.
Next speaker is Wayne on this item.
For all the little children out there, you're not going to be able to shop at the Westfield LLC, because it's only for Jews that have at least a million dollars of net worth. But I'm doing it, Mr. White Police Officer.
Stay on the item.
It's true. The $75,000 is not nearly enough money. You should triple it. I mean, you should go out in the parking lot and negotiate the deal like my daddy used to in the '70s, and bring a handgun and put it to his head and say, "We need a triple, triple play," which means you're going to go three times over the amount of the bribe. You triple play.
Mr. City Attorney, he's not talking on the item.
I know, I know as a police officer, I know you had to let these bribes go on, so it's good that you're a councilman letting bribery go on, but please, it's not enough money. Make it, make a triple. Help, help us, current price. Please, more money.
Herman.
Speaker, I pass.
Herman passes. Okay, no speakers on the cue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. Okay, next item?
Item 11, call special for cards.
Eric Previn, followed by John Walsh. Mr. Previn, you have one minute. Mr. Walsh, if you can start making your way forward.
Sir, it is Eric Previn. I was going to take the time from the previous one. If you're denying that, we'll just get it from the timekeeper. Is that you, the Dion O'Connell? I need to know who the timekeeper is. Thank you. Okay. So item 11 is a Martinez-Price motion for the El Grito celebration. And I am a big fan of the El Grito celebration. They ring the bell on the steps. This is a great detail. However, there is a television production that's being provided as well. Now, half of the districts are not participating. District Two, from the Armenian Heritage Celebration, District 12, from Mr. Englander's group, are not participating. I don't get it. But we're spending city dollars, $5,000 from each group who are included, including obviously Ms. Martinez and some of the others, and what we're doing is, we're going to fund a TV show, then what they do is they hire a TV group to film the program. I don't know if it's Channel 35 or if it's another one, but, you know, I'm very supportive of this, because I think it's a great thing. But I don't understand why the whole council's not participating, because I know everybody cares about the celebration in their district, and I would ask that everybody chip in if we're going to do such a great thing, because it sends a signal to the folks in the other districts that we don't care.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. John Walsh passes on this item. Next speaker is Antonio Ramirez, followed by Wayne.
I am not a Chicana. I am a Mexican, born in Mexico, went to school in Mexico, and raised in my traditional Mexican customary environment, and it was beautiful. I had a beautiful livelihood, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. Having said that, the battle cry, El Grito, thank you, Mrs. Nori Martinez, thank you very much. The Grito celebration is, it's a Mexican, it's sacred, customary, traditional, passionate battle cry for life, liberty, and justice, para la batalla, where the president stands in the presidential mansion in El Zócalo in downtown Mexico, in the White House, and he stands there like El Vicente Fox, with a beautiful Charlton Heston voice, that sexy, masculine voice that we no longer see in America, or Mexico for that matter, but that Charlton Heston voice with a deep monotone, and he stands out there looking at the people, gracing Mexico with a long stature of elegance, class, finesse, and intelligence, and shows the world he is Mexico. And what he does is, with every ring, three times, he yells, "Viva Mexico, viva Mexico, viva Mexico." And he says and salutes with camaraderie to the Mexican people.
Speak on the item, please.
Yes. And again, thank you very much for the interruptions, Buscayeno. You're a sourpuss and a killjoy. But having said that, again, this is a beautiful thing, and we would really enjoy El Grito celebration with Vicente Fox, only ex-presidente of Mexico, to share that with America that would say, say it three times, "Viva los Estados Unidos, viva los Estados Unidos, and viva los Estados Unidos." God bless America and Donald Trump. Oh, that would just make it so incredibly awesome. And God bless Donald Trump, because he's got balls and spit, so let Donald Trump...
Wayne, you're up. Wayne, you have one minute.
Yes, we have to support CD6, Nori Martinez, for something called El Grito. So, we have to give money from CD1, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 14. So that's nine, CD9 for current price, but for an El Grito? Okay, I guess you have the seven Latinos living in CD9. Okay, all right, that's good.
Speak on the item, Wayne.
I'm trying, Mr. Police Officer, I'm trying, but you keep interfering. You know, this isn't LAPD shakedown, you know? So, they want $5,000 each from all these council districts, but notice that three and five, they're not going to, they're not going to put in money. Paul Caretz, Peppa Pig, is not going to put in money, because it's not for the Jews.
Okay, last speaker on the item. See no speakers on the cue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay. Next, Madam Clerk, I believe we now have public comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
Very good. I can call up Henry Marine, followed by Eric Previn, on public comment. Henry, you here? Please come forward.
If you notice on my card, I said I wanted to speak before 10 council members, and I don't see 10 council members in here. So what the hell is your problem? You got problems with accounting around here? And as you know, MOU Shoah Mayor Bradley and Honorable John Ferrero and Ozzy Gonzaga and their colleagues agreed to shelter money, volunteered to shelter money from the pay of city employees, subject to mandatory contributions to lasers and calipers in the future. And we know now that for the last 25 years, y'all been sheltering the money, and you made no contributions to lasers or calipers. Therefore, you are now, have to make mandatory back payments to lasers or calipers in lieu of standing prosecution for wage theft and money laundering. That's what California Government Code 20283 provides for politicians, the right to make back payments in lieu of being prosecuted for wage theft and money laundering. So, it's your option.
Eric Previn, followed by John Walsh.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, and I don't see Councilmember Bonin today. I had asked that he re-agendize the matter of Cheyenne Desert Train versus City of Los Angeles, because it was improperly done in such a way that the public was pushed off from speaking about. That's not appropriate. I would ask the greatest council president, who's going to serve the longest ever, Council President Herb Wesson, to adhere Rule 93 immediately and make everybody the same size. On a day when Stevie Wonder is here, we could see him in full color, but we can't see the regular, ordinary residents, because we're tiny. It just makes no sense, sir. Please, ask your city attorney, who is, of course, as everybody knows, the misdemeanor-only prosecutor of the greatest city in Los Angeles, I mean, in the whole area. So that is important to understand. And, you know, I want to say the Ethics Commission is having a meeting on August 26 in the morning. It's upstairs in the tippy-top of the terrace, very hard to find, but leave enough time to get there and look it up, ethicscommission@lacity.org. They're going to be talking about non-individual contributions to all of your campaigns, a very interesting subject, and also Prevention LLC, which is my idea, which is if you're an LLC here in LA, y'all got to tell us who you are, Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you.
On order. Thank you, sir.
John Walsh, followed by Antonio Ramirez.
HollywoodHighlands.org. The city is in gigantic trouble. Yesterday, 10:45, Wilshire Boulevard, a gigantic explosion. Took 160 firefighters, according to the LA Times, to put the fire out. What are you people doing? You're giving out awards. Special Olympics was a financial disaster. 100, 200 students were stranded, ended up sleeping children, special ed children, on the floor of Loyola Marymount Basketball Court. You can only see that picture on our website, HollywoodHighlands.org. City Hall is a fire trap. Nine days ago, 1:15 PM, there was, the alarm went off, everybody scattered, we couldn't, the announcements were unintelligible. You're going to wait till there, somebody is burned to death, and then lawyer is going to play this tape at the trial where that person was burned to death at City Hall Fire Trap, that you were warned and you did nothing.
Antonio Ramirez, followed by Wayne.
I'd like to say I'm going to stand on this song, "I Did It My Way" by Frank Sinatra. This is exactly right. "I Did It My Way," and that's the way I would like to go out in life. I went into Skid Row last night, yesterday, and I got some of these Connection Community magazines, passed it around to our council members, they're all named in here. And let me again let you know that as law-abiding Mexican-American and among other speakers, we have legal standing to sue the city council and the city attorneys for denying us the right to speak. We have a gang epidemic, and wetbacks and gang bangers, and all these black pimps, as well as all these drug, white trash junkies, yet they have more privileges and more protection and safety than we do as law-abiding citizens. We come here in good faith to teach others what not to do, so they don't fall in our pitfalls like we have. I want to do that. We don't make a penny, and that is why it's important. We are voting for Donald Trump to restore America and clean up our crimes all over...
Thank you. Wayne, come up, followed by Don Garza.
You don't have a quorum. You haven't had a quorum all day, because I don't see Herb the Gangster Wesson, he's not here. See, because he had to leave early, because he has to go out. It's the weekend. You know what you do on the weekend when you're on a city council? You take out a city car, and you fill it up with city-paid gas and a city-paid credit card, and then you pretend that the car broke down, and then you charge all the hotel expenses up at San Luis Obispo or San Francisco, claiming you have to wait for the other car to come to pick you up. That's how you get all those free trips all over California when you're a councilman. So remember, kids, I know you're studying hard, but crime does pay in the city, and when you grow up, you can be a criminal like the 15 of these guys here and steal all the money. If I had it to do all over again, I think I'd do it too.
Mr. Garza, followed by Herman.
Today, I just want to express my gratitude to the city council, to Gil Célio. Today, I'm buying a bus ticket for a young man who's about to pursue his dream. He's going to be a part of a team that's going to be making videos. This young man came to LA, and the first thing he did when he got here, being homeless, was to work on Gil Célio's second part of his campaign. And I want to thank you, Gil, for being there. It was tough, and we haven't given up on him, he hasn't given up on himself, and that's how it's done, one person at a time. We don't leave our soldiers on the street to die, especially Team Célio. And let me tell you, this team is going to be touring, this team is going to be on MTV, they're going to be making rap videos, and it's because of people like Gil Célio, when we needed money for food, or we needed money to see the doctor, we could go to him, and we could go to friends like him, and that's how it's done as a team. Thank you, Gil. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Herman. Herman will be followed by Ruth Sarnoff.
I really believe we should not have the Olympics here. John Walsh, Hollywood Highland Dems, has it all written down. And I agree, John. How dare they bring the Olympics here when they can't even fix the sidewalks and streets? All they want to do is stick their hands in the money. The greedy, selfish council wants to stick their hands in the money and load up with it, so that nothing ever gets done but a few fucking murals. Hip, hip, hooray! And then we also have El Grito de Charro como los burros. Oh, hey, Mr. Kacorian! I'm back! We're the children of America! Whoa, we're the children of America! Whoa! Hey, Mr. Kacorian, are you mad? La, 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 la.
Ms. Sarnoff, come forward. Ms. Sarnoff, come forward. Ruth will be followed by Omar Baldwin.
Ruth Sarnoff. Homes, not jails. Say no to safer cities and quality-of-life policing. It's just a nicer way of saying criminalize poor people. Instead, say yes to homes for everyone. Say yes to decriminalization and diversion programs. Say yes to good jobs for everyone. For many years, LA Can and others have been reclaiming public space and dialogue in the new downtown to make it clear that longtime low-income residents of downtown LA are organized and have a plan that promotes equity and upholds human rights. Instead of continually calling for more police or writing new laws that criminalize basic needs, which will do nothing to end homelessness or, or poverty, the city must invest in solutions that serve everyone and uplift all of us in downtown. This is our home and our community, and we aren't going anywhere. We can all share downtown, but not if the city's policies are solely intended to...
Thank you. Your time's up, ma'am. Omar Baldwin, please. Mr. Baldwin, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Omar Baldwin. I'm founder and CEO of Peace Please Incorporated. I'm 23. I've been homeless for about three months now. I find myself getting into more trouble being homeless, and, and the police has zero, like, cooperation for the homeless. But, other than that, I have wrote a, a speech. It says, "We the people are the government. We the people must love our government. We the people abuse our government. We the people must use our government. We the people seek peace. We the people seek happiness. We the people are settling. We the people want more but can't have more. We the people have never witnessed..." Wait. "We the people are being offered a peace society, which is a peace democracy, which I wrote about in my book on Amazon. You can find it, Omar Baldwin, and it's quote the book..."
Thank you. Joanne Garb. Good morning, ma'am. West Hills Neighborhood Council, thank you for your service.
Thank you. But I'm speaking as an individual...
Sure.
Right now. I am appalled at the behavior of some of the audience members. I have been taught to be respectful of other people and not to make a mockery out of an, out of an institution. They think they're getting heard. The only thing they're doing is diminishing themselves and what they have to say. If they, if they had something important to say, it is totally lost, because nobody wants to pay attention to it. I know they're back, they're making the cat calls, waving, and trying to get on TV. This is not the behavior of people, reasonable people. This is the behavior of idiots. Thank you.
No, thank you. Well said. Our... Just a note, um... Mr. Kocorian.
Mr. President, this is inherently disruptive of this meeting. When anyone shouts out from the audience, at any time, they are disrupting this meeting, and they should be removed from the meeting for disruption. They can come to the microphone and do, say whatever, whatever stupid thing they wanna say. But as soon as they shout out from the audience, like Mr. Wayne Spindler is doing now, and he's continuing to talk now, even as I'm speaking...
Sergeant, see him to the door, please.
In fact, let's send him, have him both...
Yes, Mr. Kocorian, thank you.
And, and for the record, he's still yelling out during Mr. Kocorian's speech.
Thank you, Sergeant. Yes.
As Ms. Yvonne Garb just spoke about, a, a person who participates in the governance of this city through volunteering through her Neighborhood Council, when she comes and tries to speak to us on an issue of, of importance to her, she's discouraged from doing it by people like Mr. Wayne Spindler and Mr. Armando Herman, who come and every single meeting, make a disruption of this meeting, like he's still doing right now. Like he's still doing right now. No, you have no right to talk, sir. You have a right to talk at the microphone.
He's continuing to disrupt the meeting, police...
Just as a member of the public just told us from the microphone, their presence here and their disruption here is discouraging public participation in our council meetings. And they must be removed as soon as they disrupt this meeting. So, thank you, Mr. President. And just so the record will accurately reflect, Mr. Spindler is still shouting out. Even now, he's shouting out.
Continues to disrupt the meeting. He's been ordered to be removed. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, it should be noted for the record that Mr. Spindler is getting physical with the officers in the back there. I think that we really need to monitor this, and he's escalating his behavior.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Our last speaker, Shang Chang Tong. Please come forward.
Good day, sir, lady. I just want to know whether you would be kind enough to give me the actual address of the San Diego City Parking Violation Bureau. So, the sheriff, they tried several times to serve papers, so I can collect a judgment against the Parking Violation Bureau. They just keep, uh, try and keep, got fooled around by the Parking Violation Bureau. Up till this day, I'm still not being able to tell sheriff where the address, actual address, to serve the court papers on the Parking Violation Bureau. Because all I have is their P.O. Box number. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can go to the side there, sir. Mr. Campbell will help you out. Joseph Campbell will help you out here, my alleged deputy. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Thank you. Members, any announcements? Marquise, Mr. Marquise Harris-Hawson?
Much, Mr. Chair. We are very excited that 6 PM this evening in the great Martin Luther King Park on Western Avenue, we'll be having Movies in the Park, co-sponsored by our council president, Herb Wesson. We'll be looking at a Disney picture, Wally, there on the beautiful green grass at Martin Luther King Park. So we invite everybody to join us for Movies in the Park tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes.
In Mission Hills tonight, we'll be having a movie night at the historic Andres Pico Adobit Park in Mission Hills. The fun will begin at 7, and the movie will start promptly at 8.
Thank you. Heard there's a jazz festival happening this weekend. Mr. Cedillo.
Mr. President, I don't know if I mentioned it, or if you, for those who turned in late, but we have the Second Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival. And Councilmember Price and I are committed to preserving this genre of jazz and Latin jazz. It is a unique American contribution to the humanities, and we're gonna be able to see it on display this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, 12 to 7, for free, Sycamore Grove Park. The entire public is invited.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Come on?
Yes, I do. Mr. President, I wanted to invite neighbors out to the movies at Gil Lindsay Park tonight. It's gonna be an exciting, free event. We got some popcorn and giveaways. The LA Soccer Club, LA Football Club is gonna be doing some soccer exhibitions. And so, we encourage neighbors and friends to come out. It's free. What's our movie? Big Hero 6. Be There or Be Square. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Mr. Earl Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, tomorrow, Saturday, the 22nd, my office will be hosting a huge community cleanup and homeless outreach effort in the Rampart Village neighborhood in the 13th District. We'll be meeting at Brizzy Foundation at 184 Bimini Place, 90004 ZIP Code, at 9 o'clock in the morning. We're expecting about 100 volunteers, but we can always use more help. Everyone's welcome to attend. The partners include Brizzy Foundation, Koreatown Youth and Community Center, People Assisting the Homeless, otherwise known as PATH, LAPD Olympic Division, and the City Attorney's Office. And as I mentioned, it'll be a cleanup and outreach to our homeless brothers and sisters. Tomorrow, 9 o'clock at Brizzy Foundation.
Thank you. And in CD 15, we have our Fire Department, our annual safety summit with the Fire Department in Watson Station 65 at 10:30, followed by noon at Green the Block at the park in Wilmington at Watson and O. So, a lot happening this weekend. With that, colleagues, do we have any adjourning motions? Start here on my left. Seeing none on the left. On my right. Okay, seeing none, no adjourning motions. Have a blessed and safe weekend. And be safe out there. Thank you.